All right. Hi, Steph. Welcome. All right, it's six o'clock and we're going to open up the meeting. Good afternoon, evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Agenda review and disposition, is there anything to add to the agenda?
No, nothing to take away either.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Minutes of April 3rd, 2023, did you guys get a chance to?
I read them, but I wasn't present, but they were fine to me.
Yeah. Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor of accepting those? Perfect, thank you so much. We're going to start tonight's meeting with the principals' report. So, Tanya, turn it over to you.
So, I want to let you know that our enrollment is at about 416, holding steady. We have 24 students signed up for Kindergarten Connections, which is about where we were a year ago.
How many, sorry?
Twenty-four.
Oh, okay, so it's a lot more than last month.
Yes, it's come. We also have followed up on every single whisper of the possibility of a kindergarten or so. We're, as soon as we hear that there may be a new kiddo, we're figuring out a way to get in touch with that family.
Perfect.
And that's about average for this time of year, around in the mid twenties. We get a lot of August registrations for kindergarten. So, we are planning on those classrooms being somewhere between 12 and 18, which is about where we are across all grade levels. You will see in front of you a document that lists next year's teaching assignments. That has gone out to the staff and I thought that I would just publicly relay that information to the community. So, in preschool, our classroom teacher in preschool will be Stacy Therrien next year. In kindergarten, we will have Robin Morse, Courtney Whalen, who will be on maternity leave for the fall, and then Kim King. So, three teachers in kindergarten. In first grade next year, we will have three first-grade teachers, Angela Como, Jaclyn Reed, and Kristen Kilda.
Excuse me?
Yes?
On ours, it's highlighted. Is that because she's been moved?
She's been moved. Anyone who's in a new spot is highlighted.
Okay.
Then, in second grade, we are expecting 36 students. There'll be two homerooms, Michelle LaFrelliano and Leanne Stoki. In third grade, we expect right now about 32 students. It will be Sarah Carlson and Rob Cushing in third grade. In fourth grade, we are expecting 46 students. That will be Jess Dixon, Jill Perkins, and Christine Sterner. In fifth grade, there will be about 49 students, and that will be Kate Smars, Sarah Samborn, and Scott Southworth.
Question, is Sarah doing the split again?
Nope.
No, okay.
And, yep. Then, in sixth grade, there are going to be 31 students, and it will be Katie Chamberlain, Nancy Stock, and Alyssa Greenler will be 60% timed, three days a week. In seventh grade, as the board knows, we hired our new seventh-grade ELA teacher at the last board meeting. So, that will be Sydney Strang, Mark McGlon, and Jen Weatherby in seventh grade. And then, in eighth grade, we expect 50 students. It will be Kevin Greenler, Andy McDonald, and Paula Tanner. In special education, the preschool special ed position will now be Liz Rybeck. So, she's moved from fifth grade to preschool special education. Anne Murphy's staying in K to two. Erica LeBrun is staying in three to five. Gillian Rayfus is moving to the six to eight special ed case manager position. She was our, one of our boosts, one of our case managers for our behavior program. Then, we have a case manager for K-8, who's doing a variety of things. That's Taylor Jenkins. She had been the six to eight case manager. Megan Babbitt is going to continue to do behavioral support in 504s, and Lori Cleary will be the special ed coordinator. Barbara Pope will continue as our school psychologist. Sarah Thompson will continue as our reading and writing specialist. We have an open position as a reading, as a reading teacher under Sarah. So, that position has been posted, and we're working to fill that position probably as soon as possible. And then, Mitch Warmbein is our new speech and language pathologist. He is coming to us from Ohio. The board, we nominated him in January, I believe. He comes with about 10 years of experience in speech and language, as a speech and language pathologist, and is moving to be closer to his family in the Lakes region. Kat Labrie will continue as our preschool speech and language pathologist. All of our unified arts teachers are the same as currently. Brian Sheehan will continue as our school counselor, and Elise Gomes will continue as our ESOL teacher.
Can I ask you a question about the special education? So, we have a case manager now, two of them, and we're going down to one?
For boost, you mean?
For special education. That's what I'm asking the question. So, we have one now that currently does K through eight.
We're just rearranging their, we're not, we're not reducing or increasing our special ed case managers. We're just realigning the students that they'll be working with.
Okay.
So, see, they share the K to two is in, so there's case managers in each wing.
Okay, and then Taylor does every grade. Okay. Let me just ask.
Did you have two before in boost?
One boost, one soar.
One boost, one soar.
Okay.
So-
You'll just have one, and then the other, that person's going to do a variety of-
A variety of things.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about teaching assignments before I move on? Okay.
Why does Lori Cleary seem to have two after?
She's, only because she's a coordinator and I, we were, yep. Yep. So, we met a month ago, and the very next day, something very important happened at Plymouth Elementary School. And I wanted to, you know, really start the meeting by talking about the response to the threat that occurred at VES. So, as you are aware, on Tuesday, April 4th, a parent made a report to me that a student made a verbal, had made a verbal threat to shoot people in the school. I immediately notified our school resource officer, the SAU office, the police chief, and our building response team. And by immediately, I truly do mean immediately, within 30 seconds. Okay, so, the student was removed from the classroom within, definitely under five minutes. I would say about probably three minutes was removed from the classroom. An investigation began in collaboration with the police department and our response team. And we involved some mental health agencies and DCYF and the police department. Parents who were involved in the investigation were also notified immediately. So, if they had a student who was involved in any shape or form, those parents were notified immediately upon the interview with the students involved. It was determined that the student did not have a plan, did not have a weapon, and did not have a list or any online or digital issues, activities, in any way, shape, or form that were of a concern. By the end of the school day, we felt that the threat was transient and relatively resolved. We were, we felt that the investigation had been very thorough. Disciplinary policy was followed as necessary, and that's confidential, as you all know. We sent home a school messenger notification Thursday evening after some more investigation on Wednesday and realizing we really did need to communicate more with the community. We learned through this process that the message was too vague, our initial message to the community, and it left our community unsure and worried. Over the weekend, Sunday, we sent out a subsequent message with more details included in that message to try to be as transparent as we could through this process. As parents had questions, whether it be the entire week and the, or, you know, Tuesday through the following Tuesday, Mrs. Carey and myself responded. We answered questions. We called parents who emailed us. We responded to phone calls. We tried very hard to make sure that no one went without a response from one of the two of us. As part of our follow-up process, we held a debriefing conversation with the police department and our response team. From that process, which included us looking at our threat assessment guide, which is a process we use to guide this entire process, we determined that our immediate response was appropriate, and we were able to keep students and staff safe. The investigation and follow-up was extremely thorough, we determined. We acted to get the student who made the threats help and resources immediately, because that was also, that's a part of our job. We learned, though, that we need more immediate communication that's as specific as possible, even if we don't have all the answers. And we learned that future communication needs to be collaborative with the SAU office, the police department, and our building response team. I think it's important that we always reflect on big events and think about what did we do well and what did, what do we need to get better at? Unfortunately, in today's climate and world, we will prob, we may, you know, we may need to do this again, or something similar to this, and think about how we can do this as, as safely and, you know, openly as we possibly can. So, I have a longer principals' report. I do want to pause here and just say to the board, I think it was a pretty big deal for Mrs. Carey and myself. I mean, we, we, it was, wow, you know, here we go. And I cannot thank the police department enough for their collaboration with us. They were phenomenal. They really helped us out through the process. They were communicative through evening phone calls, early morning text messages, how do we follow up on this? And also, the SAU, in particular, Dana Andrews, who really guided us through the entire process and worked with us. And want to thank Kyla as well. So, thank you very much. I'm happy to take questions from you, but I'm going to keep going and then, all right? In other school news, the, this is a little bit odd to move right into what I'm about to move into, but I'm going to go for it. So, that same morning, we had Plymouth State Dining Services here providing a continental breakfast to the staff. And that night, we had eighth grade move, eighth grade move-up night at PRHS. So, it was a busy day. Before vacation, we had a wonderful trivia event in the middle school, which was riotously funny and loud throughout the whole building. The kids had a blast. And we had a phenomenal walkathon the day before vacation. The weather was beautiful, and we had all the kids outside enjoying the sunshine. And it was really sort of a campus party. It was really fun. I want to let you all know that our spring assessment calendar is posted on our website, and we're entering assessment season where EAMS Web and SAS testing will happen at the end of the year. And if you have questions about what, which tests your students are going to take and when they're going to take them, please reference the letter that's on our website. I'm not going to read those dates to you now. Also want to let you know that the teachers are continuing our social-emotional check-ins, and we will use the DESA, which is the DEVERO Assessment for Social-Emotional Skills, to recheck in on, with kiddos. And it's an eight-question, very quick screening where we, we talk about what kind of skills kids have in social-emotional areas. I could give you more information if anyone is interested in hearing more about what that is. Couple of student shout-outs in the intermediate wing. Nash Weatherby earned the CARE Award in third grade. Dylan Mitchell earned it in fourth grade, and Blake Duchette earned it in fifth grade. Want to do a huge shout-out to our teachers. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and the PTA is planning a brunch on the 11th. I had to think, I think it is sort of a brunch, actually. So, we want to, you know, the teachers in this building have shown over the last month their incredible commitment to our students and are working hard every day for our kids. So, thank you to all of the teachers. PTA meeting, is this coming Wednesday night, right here in the library? Please attend. Wanted to let you know in the area of food service that Darlene Stokowski is our building-level lead. She attended our last wellness committee meeting and followed up on a number of items, including fruits and veggie distribution and our wellness policy. So, she's a wonderful addition to our team. And I noticed that the facilities update is later in the agenda, so I'm going to wait to give that to you later in the meeting. And Kelly and I decided to just-
Didn't really have much of a report. We didn't have a lot from our baseball, softball teams. Have two games under their belts. Tracker field has two meets. I will say they already have 15 students already qualified for the Lakes Region Championship, which is pretty great with two, two meets. And safety-wise, we held our spring bus evacuation back on April 19th, I think. And then, we've got a couple more fire drills coming up this month. All right?
The only question I have is, after the assessments that happen in May, when will that data be shared with student, with parents?
With, in the report card at the end of the school year, you will get a printed copy of the parent reports.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions?
I just wanted to say one thing, not really a question, more of just an observation. I just, since Tanya's become principal, I think more information is really posted on the web. And I just really appreciate that. I think it's been growing in consistency and quickness and expanding, right? And I think that transparency is really appreciated in getting more information out to parents as much as you can about everything, I think, is always good.
Thank you.
So, I think that's been noticed.
Thank you.
Don't think I'm the only one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Privilege of the floor, number one.
Hello. My name is Melissa Corey, and I don't often speak at these things. I have two students here in the school. And I just want to kind of piggyback on what Steph said. The communication has been really good. Specifically, I wanted to come and share feedback about the event in April. Tanya was really, really gracious with her time. We had a really nice conversation. And a lot of people were frustrated, and I think that came from a place of fear. And as a, as a member in our community, with a lot of friends that come here to the school, I think what I wanted to share was that while we really appreciated the communication and the time that you all took, I think what would have helped maybe some of the rumor mill, the people sort of being scared and not understand what was happening, is to hear directly from the staff, from you and your office, the nature of the threat from the beginning, which it sounds like you guys have all been briefs in them anyway, so that's not an issue. But that's what we spoke about, and I think that would have stopped a lot of the misinformation that was happening in the community. And also, being able to answer our kids' questions if they were kind of worried about what was going on early on. Luckily, that never happened in my household, but there were some parents that were speaking about the event openly, and the kids were asking questions, talking to other children. And we didn't feel prepared for those questions. So, and then the other thing I wanted to mention was that, gosh, I can't remember, years ago, we had a training here with the police department. And I think there's a lot of new families that have come into the community since then, and it might be a great idea to revisit something like that so that the PD can also, I think, sort of soften the concerns to the community that haven't partaken in what that looks like for the school and why it's important to do your jobs first and then talk to parents. That was really eye-opening for me to go through years ago, and I think it would be really helpful to revisit that a great, maybe a few years or so.
It's already in the works.
Okay, awesome. So, we really appreciated it, really appreciated your conversation and feedback and openness with the community. Totally respect that, obviously, an investigation is very private, and we can't understand and know those things. And don't, I don't think that that was the concern. It was more just, what's the nature of the threat? Do I need to be worried? Should I keep my kid home or not? That's really all we wanted to know. So, thank you for the conversation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Sam. I'm new at this. This is my very first board meeting. I also wanted to speak about the event in April and communication with Ms. Orlando afterwards. When she responded to my email, it was amazing and very reassuring for someone like me who is worried. I did want to, you know, it sounds like you guys have stopped, have, have talked over the communication with the community and, you know, kind of the concerns that were brought up by parents about details. You know, their, the privacy is a huge thing, and it's a big privilege. And this is a small town, so, you know, any sort of information can identify who it is by somebody, somewhere. And that's, that's obviously something that we need to take into account. On the other hand, privacy is a privilege, and my child to have a safe environment to learn in is her right. I wanted to make sure that that was put out there, that yes, there are police investigations, and yes, there are other factors that need to go into communication with parents. But there is a huge difference between, there's a custodial dispute, and somebody has abducted a child because they don't have their time right there, versus there is a really ticked-off student that can't express themselves, that is going to lash out and feel power in any way that they possibly can, has motives, and has the ability to have a weapon. And then, there are everything in between. And so, risk assessment is just really important, especially when these are our little people, and our little people's brains are still developing. On that note, I wanted to take a swing over to talk about the police response in the school. There are times and there are situations for officers to respond to incidents in the school, 110%. My son was here for, for one of the events where they evacuated behind the administrative building because there was an active shooter drill that had been pulled unexpectedly, and it was treated as an active shooter because we honestly thought there was for a little while. You know, so the police response there was absolutely amazing. And, and that is the kind of response that they are made for. However, police themselves are a deterrent. And so, I wrote down, so that I don't get mixed up and nervous, just a couple of things here. In the state of Massachusetts, an officer's duty is described by the state. And I can send all of the links to all of the places where I've gotten all of these facts. If anyone is interested, just let me know. An officer's duty by the state of Massachusetts is, "As a police officer, you will be a public servant responsible for responding to fires and other emergency situations in your community." I would like to assert that an extended police presence at the school is an admittance of a failed policy to support the charges. A charges as in pupils, not charges as in the law charges. That's something I'll swing over into in a minute. But it is our directive as a community for these kids to come together and give what support we can, where we can, how we can. Instead of relying on police officers to come in and be an extended functional member of a school, why are we not utilizing, and this is rhetorical, not utilizing our extensive community in this area? As small a town as it is, everybody knows everybody, and everybody can help someone in some way because everyone has something to offer. And I feel like that is an opportunity that we, as a community, should take advantage of. Now, as far as that's Massachusetts, and this is New Hampshire, in the state of New Hampshire, the job description for an actual state police officer, among other things, are demonstrate necessary communication skills to prosecute cases in court, arrest suspects forcibly if necessary, and pursue subdued resisting suspects, assess situations to determine probable cause for search and arrest. In short, a police officer's job is to investigate and arrest criminalists for prosecution. Their presence is meant to be a threat of retaliation or punishment after a crime has been committed. Their very presence is supposed to be a deterrent because of the consequences of negative actions. What we're not taking into account here is that we know more about the brain than we ever have in the history of ever. And what we know is that the brain is a very complicated organism that does develop throughout our lifetimes. In fact, it is not done growing, making neural connections, and it doesn't stop learning, really, ever. But for the most part, our frontal cortex, the portion of our brain that is responsible for decision-making, consequences, thinking things through, even things like proper social communication, those are not present in elementary school children. These children, and I mean children, they're born with their brainstem and base primal functions fully intact. We are born to survive. We are born to, if there is a threat, we are going to do what we need to do to survive. Fight, flight, freeze. It isn't until we are in our twenties that we are fully able to take advantage of our amazing brains and become functional members of a society fully. So, by putting officers whose job is to prosecute and deter because of consequences for actions, these children aren't capable of understanding consequences for actions, for threats about a gun to school. These children are still developing in many different ways than in some ways we still don't understand. And, you know, I'm taking a lot of time so I can pull this back a little bit. But in short, police officers aren't a deterrent to elementary school kids because they can't understand deterrence yet. And abstract thinking is right out until teenage years, and then that's a whole other issue. So, the long and the short of it is, is more communication is essential to make good choices for our children, along with reduced police presence. Because I feel that a police presence just escalates a threat to the school. You don't bring a knife to a gunfight, and who has the guns? It's the officers at every single entrance and exit to the elementary school, where these students are not capable of understanding anything other than they have a gun. So, the officers are in appropriate response to emergency situations. But can we take a step back and allow ourselves to not be living in an emergency situation anymore and have our community come together so that we can be rational support of human beings?
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to discussion items, the facility update.
Sure. So, we talked about last month, we, we've had a lot of projects that were completed by the ESAR funds from COVID. So, now, we're kind of starting to look at the end of your balance and some of the savings you had because in this year's, next year's operating budget, you did not put any of the projects in, hoping that we would have some savings and trying to help the impact on the taxpayers as well. So, you are in really good shape right now, as far as Dan will be coming next month to kind of help you close out the year. But in the meantime, you've had a significant, significant amount of unanticipated revenue, over $100,000, from pieces like tuition, retirement. There was a, there was, there was money that came back, actually, I think it was over $80,000 in retirement, some special ed funds that you didn't need to use. So, you do have a comfortable amount, even with giving some back, probably around $350,000 total. Now, we have some projects to propose for you tonight, not that much at this point. I want you to think about some other projects that we've brainstormed a little bit over the years that maybe you might want to move forward with, maybe you don't want to. But we do have some other projects in maintenance that you can do right now in this summer and really knock off a lot of your CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, projects between the ESAR and your leftover funds, so you don't have to raise it in the future. So, I'm going to turn it over to Tanya. She did send around a one-pager just on what's been completed from last summer, this year, and then some of the projects for the upcoming school year, or what's in your CIP as well.
So, I'm going to sort of quickly take-
I'm gonna sort of quickly take you through this document. Want to just let you know that the science classroom's almost complete and that's from fiscal year '22 unreserved fund balance. And then the fire doors, you'll notice, maybe you noticed them when you came in. We have some new fire doors that got installed over April vacation. A couple more will be done this summer. So, we're, you know, chipping away at that. So, the, in section A, starting at number three, are some other things that we need to spend some money on. As you may be aware, our entry concrete has risen in our doors. In order for them to open, it's a little bit tricky in a number of places. So, we would like to propose that we work on some drainage issues that we have. We have some major puddles. If you spend any time with this building, they're like literally lakes around the building. So, that would be, the entry concrete would be about $30,000 and then the culvert issues would be about $18,000. And these are sort of in priority order here, so those are at the top of the list here. Next up, easily as equally as important is the septic pipes in the building. All year long, we've been having issues with our septic pipes. We lined the first 90 feet in February. That money's already been spent. We lined the second 90 feet this past week in, during vacation week. We need to ask you for an additional $35,000 to send the camera down the next line and repair the flooring in the two areas where we've already relined the pipes.
Tanya, is that the process where, like they're doing with the towel that they spray in the whatever and it makes it like PVC inside?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, that takes us through item four on the list. Item five on the list is new scoreboards for our gymnasium. We have an estimated cost for two new scoreboards of $40,000. That would include quite a substantial amount of wiring that would need to happen for both of those scoreboards.
I was gonna say, that seems like a lot.
And control panels.
Yeah.
So, number six on the list is gymnasium, the gymnasium getting painted this summer, which we got a quote last week for $20,000. That would be painting it all pretty much a neutral color except for some navy blue and red, which are the school colors. Right now, it's green and orange, so we would be psyched to update it and clean, and have it be clean. Sort of jizzed up.
Brighten it up.
Brighten it up a little bit. Then classroom area rugs for Kate, the kindergarten through fourth grade classrooms. We have a PO ready to go for those new classroom rugs. They're all predate COVID and I would like to have new classroom rugs. Lights for the school sign out front, that beautiful sign that Evan Dushette.
Not the one at the lights?
Not the one.
That is being replaced, by the way.
I was like, how are they gonna put lights up there?
No, lights right out here.
That's gonna be really hard to reach.
And then a steamer, we do not have a functional steamer in our cafeteria for keeping our food warm. So, we would like to have a new steamer.
Wouldn't we just replace the dishwasher?
Yes, and that happened over last week.
Okay.
Tree pruning is on the list for $2,800 and then a new pump jack or pallet jack for $1,000. And the subtotal for that amount of work is $162,800. You'll see right under that, as a possible project for next year would be to look at the middle school bathroom remodel. You may remember that some of us took a tour of the high school bathrooms in December-ish to look at those bathrooms at the high school level that have gone from being communal bathrooms to be multiple single stall bathrooms. We do not have any design work done for that project. The absolute approximate estimate cost would be $250,000 and just the design cost alone would probably be about $20,000 if you wanted to do that. We would be, it's, it is something we've discussed before, so we felt like it should be on the list.
So, can we stop right there?
Yes.
Just to look at, one, are you comfortable moving forward with the summer projects for right now at $162,000? Just with the labor and the parts and everything? I would like to ask the board to approve those projects if you're comfortable with that with your unreserved fund balance.
I'll make a motion to approve that amount, $162,800.
I'll second that.
All in favor of approving those projects for $162,800?
Aye.
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 Thank you. The other piece is to talk about the bathroom remodel. It's just a, it's something that many schools are shifting to, but it's totally up to you as far as what you want to do with that. It offers more privacy. Basically, what we did at the high school is we revamped to almost all single stalls based on a number thing. Behavior was huge to deter some of the vaping in the, in the, the groups of, you know, there was 10 kids going in and out of the bathroom. So, I mean, now we have cameras outside the bathrooms. We could see the kid go in and come out. And the kids are, were using, preferring the single stalls in the first place down in the CTE center. They were walking all the way across the, yeah, the hall, the building to get to those because they just prefer that.
Of course.
Stalls are short. You all know what a whole high school bathroom looks like. So, it's something that some of the elementary schools are going to is, as well. Instead of the gang shower, gang showers, gang bathrooms, they're looking at just more privacy and then upgrading it. You've had bathroom renovations in your CIP, so whether it's done it with a group or a single, it's, it's time to start looking at whatever design you might like to do. Some do a little bit of both.
Are we having the, like the same sort of issues that the high school did?
No, in terms of, we have not had any vaping issues this year and really only one or two since I've been here. I will say, there's a lot of cellphone use we're aware of in the bathrooms. It's the primary space to go use a cellphone. And it's a little different in a middle school. We, we make it uncomfortable. It's get out of the bathroom, you know, we're sort of, we, we keep people moving on purpose. One thing that I will say, as someone who worked at the high school, when some of the single use, it's not single stall because it's really a room, single use bathrooms, we found that kids were using the bathroom more because of the privacy, because they felt more comfortable to be in the bathroom, which I had not realized as much even though my kids have come through there, how much they really feel like it.
So, I just didn't know where.
Can I ask a quick question about funding? The Esser funds are, it's money left over from the CARE Act, is that correct?
The Esser funds are from COVID. You have spent all your Esser funds at this point.
We have, okay.
For Esser 2.
So, we have none of that left?
So, you may have another batch for?
Well, it's Esser 2 and Esser 3 funds that are going to do the gymnasium and the propane.
Right.
Okay? And we're going to be proposing tonight, you know, that, that we use those funds to do this space, the library space.
Right.
Which is number 15 on the list. Which would include, you already authorized the, the design, but the life safety mechanical work for this space, the glassing in, similar, all the way around the space and then new furniture and new shelving units for this space. And that would all be Esser funds for that.
That would expend all your Esser funds if you didn't move forward.
But I didn't understand, I thought you said we actually had funds to be able to do.
The funds that, so you have unreserved, so.
The unreserved fund balance?
Yeah, I mean, for, if you wanted to move forward with the middle school bathroom remodel, I would almost ask you just to do the design work to see what that would look like and not, because the $250,000 is really not an accurate number. It's just kind of, and it's not something we would be able to get done this summer anyways. But if you move forward with the design work, if you want to look at different ways we can structure that middle school remodel, that's something we can move forward with. In addition to the $162, you can add that 20 on them. We're not asking for approval for the whole project. I just didn't, I want you to think about which direction you want to move into. Is that something you want to move towards, is redesigning the bathrooms?
I personally think in, in today's world, we should look at the redesign of the bathrooms. That's my, single, yes, but that's my thought.
So, if you want to first start with that and look at the design work, that would be the next vote.
Yeah, so you want to motion to, to spend up to 20 grand?
How many bathrooms are we talking?
Well, we would be only proposing the middle school remodel.
And how many, and how many are those, sorry?
So, that would come with the design? So, like at the high school, we, we had to change the number of bathrooms depending on the space and that came from the, the design work that we had done there.
But there's one slot right now.
There's, there's one, one, one girl's room with four partitioned stalls and one boy's room, which I, which is about the same with, I think it's some urinals. And they would get remodeled into probably at least three on either side.
And when there's single stalls bathroom, just because I didn't see the high school, that's like toilet sink, kind of like what you have out there.
It's a staff bathroom.
It's like the staff bathroom.
Yes, yeah.
Which is always the one I use from up here.
It's a little bit different. Some of the high school bathrooms have the toilet in its, like a toilet room and then they come out and use one sink.
I see, to save kind of.
To just to save on the.
Yeah, so you're not having a sink in. But that would be part of the design.
Right, correct.
Correct.
And developmentally appropriate for middle school kids.
Yeah, developmentally appropriate. And then I would imagine that they could probably flex the design a little bit based on the estimated budget that we have, right?
So, would the, a design company propose like a couple of options or?
They'll just see what we have for plumbing and, and, you know, what we have, what they could, they'll just come up with some, some plans of what they can offer and then we can pick and choose if it works and what the cost is. I mean, I'm sure you can add.
And go into the next budget season with that knowledge too. I mean, it gives us good information regardless of how we move forward.
And it's, we just expect that the design would be ready over the summer? Is that right, the right timeframe?
Probably, it usually takes a few months, yeah, a month or two.
It would probably not get done until the following summer or, yeah.
The design work will be done in a few months though.
Yeah, the design work would be done.
Right, right, that's what I understood would take.
No, Tanya, is that $20,000 just to look at the middle school? Or would they look at every bathroom set?
It's just for middle school.
Just the middle.
Just in middle school, okay.
I believe. I spoke with Jason this morning.
Okay.
I think that's the most important one to start with.
I agree.
Those kids are the oldest.
And also gets them ready for what they're gonna see in the high school.
In the high school.
Correct, yeah.
I would vote to approve it.
Yeah, I'd want to make a motion first for.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the $20,000 for the bathroom design.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Now we can vote on it.
All right, all in favor of the $20,000 for the design of the middle school bathrooms?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving through the rest of the facilities update, the dishwasher wasn't, was installed over April vacation. We have our, we're ready to go for our summer projects of the HVAC for the gymnasium, the new propane tanks, which will be in the middle school parking lot area. And our boilers are onsite, so we are literally ready to go. As soon as we don't have to heat the building, we can move ahead with some of those, that project. In terms of the library learning commons, at our last meeting, you had authorized the funds for the design of this space. That is being worked on. This week, I will be meeting with the furniture representative, Jason Bergeron, the facilities director, and Beth Wilkie to start to think about this space and turning it a little bit more from a library into a learning commons. So, we are excited about that.
Tanya, what, well, I'm assuming that when you guys discuss it, they'll, you'll talk about what we're gonna do with the old, because I know that we donated cafeteria tables to a school in New York, so.
Yes, we would.
I would assume that you guys would discuss something along those lines of.
Definitely, definitely. And I will let you know that classroom teachers are, bookshelves are highly sought after, so.
It might end up somewhere else.
Right, yes, we might refocus them within the, in the building.
Isn't that meeting with Dana?
That's the furniture rep.
That's the furniture rep.
The furniture rep, okay.
We have a safe grant in the window film, which is a film for bulletproofing. Bullet resisting, thank you. Is going, we're second on the list of the high school. Will get done at the first part of the summer and we will be done at the second part of the summer.
Every window?
Every first floor build, window.
Which is most of our windows.
Yes, yes. And then, as you are aware, we received a private donation from a former staff person's family and we are moving ahead with us, with spending that money on a swing set for the middle school playground because the playground, the middle school parking lot is going to be torn up for the propane tanks. So, we're gonna continue our work towards making that middle school playground a little bit more fun. So, we are going to order a four-person swing, which we, I worked with Jason Bergeron and Rob Cormier. It's gonna be in the, in the far corner of that parking lot so that they can still plow. And we are going to work on some grading of that space as well when we have all of the heavy equipment here. Anyways, also with that private donation, we are moving ahead with a garden in front of the greenhouse. So, that area will be rototilled in the next 10 days. And then we have a planting plan and watering plan to make the backside of the greenhouse more attractive and another space for learning and being outside. And the kids are gonna help us do the planting, so.
So, we had $30,000 from the donation?
A little more than that.
Okay, I couldn't remember what the amount was. What was the amount?
It was 50.
Okay.
And we have bought, we bought the Gaga pit in order, you know, buying some playground equipment, some things, just things that maybe, things to make it more fun.
Make it fun.
For middle schoolers. So, that is the facilities update. Other than, I would like to take a very serious moment to thank Gary Miller, who was here all last week, helping make sure the science classroom remodel flooring happened, helping make sure all of these really heavy fire doors got installed. And we have not had any applicants for our custodial opening and he worked, shifted ahead. He is working a lot to help us continue to maintain this building. And this morning, he was here bright and early to help me blow up some palm trees for Paula Tanner to welcome her back to the building. So, he is also here with a smile on his face. So, I cannot thank Gary enough for helping us manage everything and, and just being a great partner to us. So, thank you, Mr. Miller. And that's it.
Thank you. This is so exciting. I love that facilities update. I'm like, oh, look at all this money we don't have to spend.
Palm trees and Gaga pits.
I know, Gaga pits and blow up palm trees. That's amazing.
I remember hearing about that.
Is there any other business that?
No other business.
Okay, perfect. And then privilege of the floor, number two. Is there anyone else that would like to say anything? I appreciate you guys coming to the meeting. I always like it when people come and I always appreciate comments from you parents and anyone that wants to speak, so thank you. All right, with that, you guys all sign off on everything that we need to get back going around? All right, perfect. All right, then you need a motion to go into non-public, yeah? All in favor of going into non-public? Thank you, thank you for coming.